Welcome, everybody, to the 2021 Hanover Town Meeting. It's great to see everybody. It's especially great to welcome you all to my personal déjà vu, where last year at this time, I was saying this is the most unusual town meeting Hanover has ever had, and here we are again. So, thank you for coming, and we'll all keep our fingers crossed once again and hope we can be back in the Hanover High School gym next year. Prelimarily, as I call the meeting to order, I'd like to just introduce our Select Board with Mr. Christie, Chairman.[44.46][44.46](APPLAUSE). Thank you. Nancy Carter, Joanna Whitcomb, Athos Racios, and Bill Garrity, and then our Town Manager, Julia Griffin, there on the end.[62.57][62.57](APPLAUSE). I'd like to introduce Nancy Carter for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. We have our flag here on the stage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nancy. Before we dive into the articles, I did briefly want to do a voice vote on, as we go through the articles, we're going to read the article, and then ordinarily, the statute requires us to read it once again in the course of moving to approve it, and I would like your permission to read it just the one time. So, the motion I am putting on the table is that the body approves that the Select Board will read the Warren article once before the question is called. All in favor, raise your palette. All opposed? Thank you, the motion passes. Turning to our first article tonight in the business agenda, Article Number Six, I'd like to introduce Peter Christie to read the article.
I can't tell you how often I've wanted to do this article, so tonight's a treat. Is that better? Okay. I was just saying that it's a treat to do this article. I've wanted to do this one for many years, but have always been outbid by my fellow Selectmen. I move, and I nominate the following persons for the following offices: three fence viewers, each for a term of one year; Robert Gable, Matt Marshall, Sarah Packham. Do we do them both at once?
Yep.
I also move the two surveyors of the woods and time, each for the term of one year; John Richardson and Robert Keen.
All set. We have a motion on the table. Is there a second? I see a second, thank you very much.
Jeremy?
Yep.
I'll just give you a little background.
Okay.
This will only take a half hour or so. Hanover continues this histori— for the fence viewers, Hanover continues this historical position dating back to the colonial era. Fence viewers are available to adjudicate property line disputes. So now you know who to call on a property line dispute. And as for the surveyors of wood and timber, Hanover also continues this historical position dating back to the colonial era. Surveyors are available to adjudicate disputes regarding the sufficiency of a delivered cord of wood.
Thank you. Any further debate on Article Number Six? I will call the question, then. All in favor of the motion on the table, raise your palette. All opposed? The motion passes. Article Six passes. Thank you. Turning to Article Seven, Mr. Christie, once again, on the bond issue. As you'll note from this article, once he reads it, we will be doing a secret ballot with your yes or no vote ticket, which you have. The runners will go around and make sure that everyone can deposit their ticket. Once the question is called on this particular ballot, we'll give you some time to go ahead and submit your ticket to the ballot collectors, but you will have one hour from the time this question is called to go ahead and put that ticket in. We'll make an announcement when that ticket gathering process is closed in one hour. Mr. Christie?
Before we do this article, I think we have a special presentation, Julia.
Betsy McLean, can I have you come up to the stage? Can somebody grab Betsy for me?
She might be counting.
Do we see her moving?
She's running away.
Well, we're going to do something special to recognize Betsy. Some of you may not be aware that Betsy's retiring at the end of August. Betsy has been the town's Administrative Services Director for 20 years, and this town manager is going to be absolutely lost without her. She will continue as our elected town clerk, so you'll continue to see her at elections, but we're losing her as our Administrative Services Director, and here she comes. I can see her walking over. She's really not happy with me that I'm doing this, but I have a little something I want to give to Betsy from town meeting. Now, this is Hanover, and we could provide cut flowers, but, you know, it would felt like it needed to be a pollinator and a bird attractor, given all the work we do. So, Betsy?
Whoa! That's lovely! Oh, my gosh!
This is a shrubbery for your garden. Chris knows he's supposed to take it home for you.
It was a shrubbery. So, yes, I was supposed to remember that before I introduced that prior article, but I was so excited about Article Seven that I moved right on to it, so thank you for interrupting me. Mr. Christie, Article Seven.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $950,000 for the purpose of capital repairs and renovations to selected bridges throughout the town, and to authorize such sum to be raised through the issuance of bonds or notes, and in compliance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, as amended, to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, gifts, or donations, if any, which may be available for said project, and to comply with all applicable laws to said project, to authorize the Select Board to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity, and other terms thereof, and to authorize the Select Board to take any other action necessary to carry out this vote, or to pass any other vote related to it. This action shall be written a yes or no ballot. Polls shall remain open, and ballots shall be accepted by the moderator for a period of not less than one hour following the completion of discussion on this article.
Thank you very much. And before we get into debate on this question, I do want to introduce Carrie Callahan of the Hanover Finance Committee, who asked to offer the Finance Committee's thoughts on this—
Jeremy, may I do my presentation first?
Oh, yes, of course.
Carrie, you're on deck. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Seconded.
As we have discussed many times in the past, the town has a very rigorous capital reserve program that has been quite successful in smoothing out the taxed impact of capital purchases over the years. That program has been less successful in funding very expensive, long-term assets. Several years ago, for example, we funded the new ladder truck from both reserves and long-term lease. Historically, we have funded the water treatment plant, the water reclamation plant, and other large projects through bonding. When the need for significant bridge work was discussed as part of this year's budget, the Board had two primary funding options. One was to significantly increase the amount being put into that reserve over the next several years, or to consider bonding. In talking through the two approaches with the help of the Finance Committee, it became clear that bonding was the best alternative, in light of the amount of the investment needed, the current low interest rates, and the 30-plus-year life of the assets. If approved tonight, the town will apply to the state to be included in their bond program in December. We would then draw down on the bond over the next two to three years as the actual work is done. If we opt for a 20-year bond, the cost would be approximately $60,000 per year, assuming current interest rates, and payments would not start until FY '23. Carrie, you're up.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Carrie Callahan, Nine North Park Street, Vice Chair of the Hanover Finance Committee. So, raising money through bonds for fixing bridges is a big change from the current practice of saving money up ahead of time, but record-low interest rates have created both favorable terms for borrowing, as well as a reason to borrow, since a shortfall in town-earned interest income has put pressure on the town's tax rate. By bonding, the town will cut the annual impact of bridge maintenance on the tax rate by spreading payments out over 20 years, which seems right for assets with a long lifespan, such as bridges. During a public meeting on March 8th of this year, the Hanover Finance Committee voted unanimously to support the proposed bond for the maintenance of bridges in an amount of up to $950,000. And on a personal note, Hanover's historical debt aversion and fiscal conservatism have served it well for decades. This bridge bonding seems the right solution for this particular situation and for these particular times, but I would urge the Select Board to view it as just one financial tool among many, rather than as setting as a new direction for capital assets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other debate on this question? Does anyone else wish to be heard on Article Seven? Okay, seeing no other debate, I will close debate. I will call the question, and remember, this is not a hand vote. We ask you to put your decision ticket, yes or no, into the ballot box that will circulate amongst you. I'll give five or minutes or so for that to commence, but you'll have one hour from now to complete your voting. That process will continue. Go ahead and put your ticket into the collection box as it comes around. Again, you have one hour. Moving to Article Eight, Ms. Whitcomb.
Thank you, Jeremy. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,790 for deposit into the land and capital improvement fund, and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of this amount from the unassigned fund balance. The amount appropriated is the equivalent of 50% of the total collected in land use change tax in the fiscal year 2019-2020.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank, I see a second in the front row. Would you like to speak?
I will just say that we have this trusty, mink-covered town report, and if you turn to page 32 in the green section, you can follow along for an explanation of all of the articles. I think everyone—people may be familiar with this. When land is removed from current use, there's a 10% tax that the town collects. Back in 1999, we created two funds. This one is for land and capital improvements, and we continue to—we split the tax that comes in between this and the next article.
Any debate on Article Eight? Does anyone wish to weigh in on Article Eight? Just raise your palette up. There being no debate, I will call the question. All in favor, say aye by raising your palette. All opposed, raise your palette for nay. The motion carries. Article Eight carries. Article Nine, Ms. Whitcomb.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $18,790 for deposit into the Conservation Fund, and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of this amount from the unassigned fund balance. The amount appropriated is the equivalent of 50% of the total collected in land use change tax in the fiscal year 2019-2020.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. I see a second in the second row. Additional comment? Any debate thoughts? Floor is open. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye by raising your palette. All opposed, nay, raise your palette. Thank you. The motion carries. Article Nine. Article Ten, Ms. Whitcomb.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $33,430 for deposit into the Municipal Transportation Improvement Fund, and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of this amount from the unassigned fund balance. This amount is equivalent to the total transportation fee surcharge for each motor vehicle registered in the town of Hanover. That's $5 per vehicle during the fiscal year 2019-2020.
Thank you. Do I have a second? We have second in the front. Any further comment? Does anyone wish to offer thoughts or debate on this issue? Hearing none, I will move the question. All in favor of Article Ten, say aye by raising your palette. Thank you. All opposed? The motion carries. Article Ten. Article Eleven, Nancy Carter.
Good evening, and every year when I read this, I apologize to everyone in the audience that it is such a lengthy article. However, I do have to read every dollar amount, so be patient, and I am grateful to you. I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,432,125, and authorize the payment into the existing capital reserve funds in the following amounts for the purposes for which such funds were established. Ambulance Equipment Capital Reserve Fund with funding to come from the ambulance fund, Building Maintenance and Improvement Capital Reserve Fund with funding to be raised through taxation, $160,000. Dispatch Equipment and Dispatch Center Enhancements Capital Reserve Fund with funding to be raised through taxation, $26,381. Fire Department Vehicle and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund with funding to come from the Fire Fund, $82,567. Highway Construction and Maintenance Equipment Capital Reserve Fund with funding to be raised through taxation, $398,353. Police Vehicles and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund with funding to be raised through taxation, Sewer Equipment and Facilities Improvements Capital Reserve Fund with funding to come from the Waste Water Treatment Facility Fund, $391,757. Water Treatment and Distribution Equipment and System Capital Reserve Fund with funding to come from the Water Utility Fund, $176,500.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I see one way in the back, thank you very much. Do you want to offer comment on this first?
I do not.
Okay. I'd like to open the floor for debate on Article Number Eleven. Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor of Article Eleven, say aye by raising your palette. Thank you. And all opposed? One opposed. Congratulations. The article carries. Article Eleven.
I move—
Article Twelve.
Hi, it's the Carter, Mike. Thank you very much. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,820,400 for the purposes listed below, and to authorize funding these amounts by withdrawal from the listed capital reserve funds in the following amounts. Building Maintenance and Improvement Capital Reserve Fund. Partial exterior siding replacement of the RW Black Community and Senior Center. Cabling and fire alarm work in selected town properties, $95,000. Fire Department Vehicle and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. Plumbing repair and renovation to the main fire station, $35,000. Highway Construction and Maintenance Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. Replace pickup truck, number 16. Replace heavy department—heavy highway department equipment, including excavator, sidewalk tractor, and vacuum sweeper, $686,400. Parking Operations Vehicles and Parking Facility Improvements Capital Reserve Fund. Replace single-head parking meters with kiosks throughout the parking system, $146,000. Road Construction and Improvements Capital Reserve Fund. Reservoir Road Roundabout Truck Apron Repair and Replacement. Audible Pedestrian Systems, APS, upgrades at targeted intersections, $149,000. Sewer Equipment and Facilities Improvements Capital Reserve Fund. Pump Station Number Two, Phase Two. Grass Roads Solar Installation to Provide Power to Water Reclamation Facility, WRF Plant, Phase Two, $502,000. Water Treatment and Distribution Equipment and System Capital Reserve Fund. Treatment and Monitoring Equipment. Improvements to Electrical Wiring and Metering to Improve Efficiency, $207,000. This will be a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 32:74, and will not relapse until these specified purchases are complete, or June 30th, 2026, whichever occurs sooner.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I see a second in the back, thank you very much. Any further comment, Ms. Carter?
I have none.
Any debate from the floor on this particular question? Yes, sir, in the second row.
David Sobel, Dresden Road in Hanover. And while I certainly support this, I might just bring to the Select Boards and the appropriate agencies' attention, it's my recollection that the apron at the Reservoir Road Roundabout started deteriorating very, very quickly due to heavy truck use very shortly after its completion, and it might be worth consideration of employing tactics and construction materials, or however people do such things, that would mitigate the rapidity with which that deteriorated. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor of Article Twelve, say aye by raising your palette. And then, nay by raising your palette, please. The motion carries. Article Twelve is passed. Article Thirteen, Ms. Carter.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 for funding the construction of a sidewalk segment along Crosby Street, and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of this sum from the Municipal Transportation Improvement Fund. This will be a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 32:74, and will not lapse until these improvements are completed, or June 30th, 2026, whichever occurs sooner.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. We have a second down front. Any further comment, Ms. Carter?
None.
Anybody want to offer thoughts, debate on Article Number Thirteen? I'll move the question. All in favor of Article Thirteen, say aye by raising your palette. Thank you. All opposed, say nay. The article carries. So, we have results from the ballot voting today, which included Select Board offices, the library trustees, the trustee of the trust funds, and a series of zoning articles, as well as a petition on the town manager plan. The total votes were summarized as follows. For Select Board, blank received 733 votes. David Witt-Milman received 730 votes. Joanna Lee Whitcomb received 1,019 votes. Nancy Carter received 1,000 votes, and write-ins received 14 votes. With respect to the library trustee of the Etna Library, there were 387 blanks, 1,352 for Elizabeth Cornell, and write-ins, there were 10. For the trustee of the trust funds, there were 383 blank, 1,353 for Judson J. Pearson, and 13 write-ins. For Article Number Two, Planning Board, Family Definition, blanks, 111. Those in favor voting yes, 1,068. Those opposed voting no, 570. Petition, Article Three, Regarding a Zoning Amendment, blanks, 143. Yes, 705. No, 901. Petition, Article 3, Regarding a Zoning Amendment, blanks, 143. Yes, 705. No, 901. Article 4, Petition 2, blanks, 67. Yes votes, 594. No votes, 1,088. Article 5, Petition Regarding the Town Manager Plan, blanks, 74. Those voting yes, 1,200. Moving on to Article 14, Mr. Garrity.
Good evening.
Your mic.
Good evening.
Is this mic on?
Yeah. Brian?
Sorry. Good evening. Now we're good. Article 14. I move that the town vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Select Board and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 1348, Public Works Department Employees on May 17, 2021, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. Year 2021-2022, estimated increase, $43,718. And further, to raise the appropriate, inappropriate the sum of $43,718 for the 2021-2022 fiscal year, such sum representing additional costs attributed to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the proposed agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels in accordance with the most recent collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second on Article 14? Second in the front. Further comment, Mr. Garrity?
Yes, this is one of the three unions that the town negotiates with. On the green sheets, on Page 34, you'll see a summary for all three bargaining unit articles. These are one-year contracts. Obviously, as we negotiated with the union in a very cooperative manner, we could not predict what was going to happen back in the spring for next year, so we mutually agreed to one-year contracts. We'll come back and visit it again, but the, this represents the change in salary and benefits for this particular group.
Any further comments or debate from the floor on Article Number 15?
14.
14, I'm sorry. 14. Did I see a comment out there? I think I see one comment coming in. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm confused as how to break down Article 14, 15, and 16. Can you just clarify, please?
Sir, this amount of money in each one of the articles represents a 2% increase in base pay, plus the cost of social security and the required state contribution to the retirement plan. It does not include any other benefits which are centrally budgeted. So, for example, the health plan, which would be one of the more expensive ones, that's in the central budget, which we'll be discussing later.
Thank you. Any further comment or question or concern? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of Article 14, raise your palate to say yes. All opposed? The motion carries. Article 14 carries. Article 15, Mr. Garrity.
I move that the town vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Select Board and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 3657, Police Department Employees on May 17, 2021, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. Year 2021-2022, estimated increase, $35,989. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,989 for the 2021-2022 fiscal year, such sum representing additional costs attributed to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the proposed agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels in accordance with the most recent collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second on Article 15? Thank you. I see a second in the way back. Any further comment? Questions, concerns, Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of Article 15 say aye by raising your palate. Thank you. All opposed, raise your palate. Thank you. The motion carries, and Article 15 carries. Mr. Garrity, Article 16, please.
I move that the town vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Select Board and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 3288, on May 17, 2021, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current salary level. Year 2021-2022, estimated increase, $28,761. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of $28,761 for the... Hold for a moment. But interesting timing. And I continue. And further, to raise the inappropriate the sum of $28,761 for 2021-2022 fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributed to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the proposed agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels in accordance with the most recent collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I see a second in the second row. Thank you. Any further comment, debate, observation, questions from the crowd? There being none, I'll call the question. All in favor of Article 16, say aye by raising your hand. Thank you. All opposed, raise your palate. Thank you. The motion carries. Article 16 carries. For Article 17, I'd like to introduce Peter Christie.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $26,321,356 to pay the operating expenses of the town for the 2021-2022 fiscal year for the purposes set forth in the town budget. This sum does not include the funds voted in any of the preceding or succeeding articles.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I see a second in the second row. Thank you. Mr. Christie, do you want to speak on this?
I shall.
Thank you.
Before I talk directly about the budget, I would like to digress a bit. You might have noticed over the years that the Select Board is pretty quiet during town meeting, beyond reading the articles and providing some background comments. That is because that is not, this is not our meeting, this is your meeting, and our role primarily is to listen and answer questions as best we can. After every town meeting, however, I always have a moment of regret as I reflect on my input to the meeting itself. Sort of a buyer's remorse. Last year was no exception, as I wished I had given a bit more background concerning police and social services funding, when the suggestion was made that we should reduce one to better fund the other. First, let me say that the town management and the Select Board do not view this issue as an either-or decision, but rather, we see our job is to find a way to fund both adequately, along with all other budget needs for the town. How the town funds social service agencies has changed over the years. When I first joined the board, the town would put a new social service agency's request in a separate budget article, and if it passed three years in a row, it would automatically be included in the future budgets. Some of these agencies, while being very deserving, did not provide direct benefits to the town. At one meeting about eight years ago, the policy was questioned, as many felt that it was not appropriate for the town to use tax money for social service agencies other than in a very targeted way. Shortly after that meeting, the town adopted a different system that we still use today. In our current system, our agencies that provide, only agencies that provide services that the town is legally obligated to provide are eligible for funding. And as part of an application process, the agencies have to justify their funding requests with data of their costs for providing services to Hanover residents. I believe that this system has worked well, and as we partner with several wonderful agencies who provide required services to our residents at a quality and a cost that the town could never achieve on its own. I cannot remember any qualified, qualifying local agency request not being fully funded, and this year was no exception. Now, more directly to this year's budget. This year's budget can be characterized by having to deal with more unknowns than usual. Put yourself back to November 2020, when the Select Board first set the tax rate increase target, and then to March, when Julia presented the draft budget at our budget hearings. The unknowns were considerable. Would the vaccines be effective? When would they be available? One of our historically most robust funds, the parking fund, was in the tank and had gone from a positive $730,000 but, but, balance in June 2020 to a projected negative of $40,000 in June 2021, with no floor in sight. When would, when would people be returning to work downtown, rather than working from home? How would we fund the major bridge replacement needs? Union negotiations were still underway, were just getting underway. How would the pandemic affect building permit fees, car registration fees? What was possible at Dartmouth in terms of how many students would be on campus, and how soon? How would that impact the town? How would the state administer federally funded relief? How would the state share rooms and meals tax revenue? How many financial setbacks were temporary? How many were permanent? When would they recover? How many Hanover citizens were looking at layoffs, pay freezes? Lots of unknowns. In recognition of these unknowns, the approach the board took was to preserve essential services, hold costs in check, but not to panic or assume doomsday scenarios. We chose to hedge our bets by using more undesigned fund balances than we ordinarily would, thus bringing many of those funds to the lower end of their desired range. The budget was also greatly helped by the decision to bond for the bridge repairs that we have already discussed, and our three unions accepting a one-year contract that including, that included only step increases and no cola. While we are not able to accomplish as much in this budget as we usually do, and remembering that approximately $1,000 represents 1% in the tax rate, let's take a look at some of the key assumptions and accomplishments. Key assumptions include $96,000 being budgeted for interest income, down from two, down by $270,000 from last year's budget due to expected lower interest rates. New Hampshire Rooms and Meals Revenue was, has held steady at $582,000. Many other tax revenues were conservatively budgeted at last year's low level. Building permit fees were decreased by $43,000 from last year's budget. Key accomplishments include the municipal tax rate increase was limited to 2.93%, right percent, right below the 3% original target. The assessing department was fully funded to complete the ongoing revaluation and to be adequately staffed going forward. $59,000 was budgeted to fund the implementation of a rental housing inspection program in anticipation of that program being adopted by the Select Board. Funds were budgeted to support our part-time sustainability director. This position had been fully funded by the Brissette Fund for the past three years. Funds were included to install additional audible pedestrian mid-block crosswalk signals at a cost of $69,000. The Roundabout Apron on Reservoir Road will be replaced at a cost of $80,000. The Deputy Fire Chief position is now fully funded. I hope these give you a flavor of the budget highlights. All of these and more are included in the annual report. In summary, the proposed budget requires a 2.9%, 2.93% municipal tax increase, which represents an increase of $80 on a $500,000 home. Before we take questions, I want to give special thanks to Julia and town staff for getting us through this horrible pandemic. They have, they have shown great ingenuity and fortitude in successfully working through the never-ending challenges and continuing to provide high-quality services in a safe way. I would also, for sure. I would also be remiss not to thank Betsy, her team, and Dartmouth College for making this town meeting possible in a safe environment. And as always, this one you can clap for yourselves. As always, I want to thank all of the many volunteers who make Hanover hum. Check out their names in the annual report. I think you will be impressed. I hope that you support the proposed budget, and I look forward to seeing you next May in the Hanover High School gym. What a year.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. We have, before we open the floor to general debate, I'd like to call on Kari Asmus of the Hanover Finance Committee to speak on the committee's notes and observations concerning Article 17 and the big budget.
May I have a second?
No, I got the second.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for recognizing me. As you just stated, my name's Kari Asmus, and I'm the Chair of the Hanover Finance Committee. Our full statement is on Page 121 of the annual report. It's been an honor to again serve the people of Hanover. With your permission, I'd like to briefly introduce our members. Bill Garrity, up at the front, has been our Select Board member. Kim Hartman has been our member from the school board. And then we have five members at large, and that would be me, Carrie Callahan, Jeff Ives, I know he's here somewhere, Matt Gardner, and stepping down after three years is Mary Hocken Phillips, who will now represent Hanover in the House of Representatives in Concord. She just can't volunteer enough, so thank you, Mary. Should anyone here tonight be interested in filling Mary's seat, we are appointed jointly by the town and school moderators, who are, if I am not mistaken, still accepting letters of interest. People should feel free to contact me or any of the committee members, one of our moderators, or Town Hall, for email addresses. But now, without further ado, during our public meeting on March 8, the committee voted unanimously to support the proposed budget. Since that time, we have continued to monitor developments and note the news of American Rescue Plan funding that's particularly welcome, though we know fiscal challenges still remain. The budget proposed by the Select Board would result in a maximum increase of 3% in the current tax rate without staff layoffs or making cuts to services and programs such as paving or recycling. We believe the balances, the need of our town for services, and those of the taxpayers... and those of the taxpayer. Many of the challenges this year were driven by external factors, such as a mandated increase in contribution to the state retirement fund and the loss of revenue from multiple streams. Many, if not most, were COVID-related. Other increases could be considered costs of doing municipal business, keeping wages for our union workers competitive, for example, or hitting on the right funding mechanism so that we can make those expensive but necessary capital improvements and repairs. To achieve this balance, the Select Board paused some payments into capital reserve funds and, as mentioned, took the unprecedented step of using one-time, undesigned fund balance monies to support ongoing operational expenses, measures that potentially defer a difficult fiscal situation to a future year, particularly if revenues have not bounced back by the time the federal funds are depleted. Given the -- it's just one more. Given the concern for future years, I would be remiss if I did not point out that one decimated disappointment with this budget is that after assurances to the contrary, approximately $90,000 of staff positions ceded by Brissette Fund are now to be funded by taxpayers rather than by hope for alternative funding sources. As beneficial as these positions may be, their addition at this time adds to the difficulty of getting back to a firm financial footing. The possibility was held out that alternative funding might still be achieved, and that would be well worth pursuing. The Finance Committee would also like to take this opportunity to ask all of our municipal and school officials to remain mindful going forward that the impact of the upcoming property revaluation to taxpayers is likely to fall unevenly. And even if the collective increase in tax rates are reasonable, there may be those for whom this tax season will bring an unexpected burden. Now, all said, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I would like to extend our appreciation to the Select Board and town administration and commend their hard work this past year on the budget, all the while continuing extraordinary efforts to keep our town thriving and yet safe during this pandemic. It's difficult to imagine being in better hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Asmus. So there's a motion on the table to approve Article 17. There was some question as to whether I had obtained a second. I believe I did from the second row, but I see one in the first row. So we have a second for Article 17. Is there any further debate or question or concern that the legislative body would like to raise about Article 17? Lots of hands up in the back. We'll start here in the second row. We'll get to everybody. Just make sure you keep that hand up. Go ahead.
I'm Bill Fischel, to Reed Road. Used to be on the Finance Committee. And I have a burning question that I'm sure everybody's interested in the answer to, is what's with the parking on Main Street dedicated to restaurants? Is that going to continue? Does that cost us a lot of money? Or is it a net gain to the town? Thank you.
Ms. Griffin.
So, Bill, we charge $15 per day to rent a parking space, and that equates to the average amount of revenue generated by a typical Main Street parking space on a typical parking day. So think of it as losing a maximum of $15 per day per space that's encumbered by our restaurant users, those being Murphy's, Lou's, and Beloko. I believe we have a total of 10 spaces that are encumbered, $150 a day. Our sense is that the support for our downtown restaurants was so important during this pandemic and so well-received by the community that we thought it was important to continue that practice up until Labor Day this year. And it may well continue until the end of October, depending upon the weather. I will tell you that as we spent time over the last year looking at our downtown sidewalk reconstruction project, which we've yet to budget for, one of the things we've heard loud and clear from the community is that they would like us to expand the sidewalk footprint so that we could include, on a permanent basis, the outdoor dining for our restaurants. They would like it. So it's been well-received. It was a huge boost to the restaurants, particularly when we were limited in terms of internal dining. And I think in general, it's just done a really nice job of livening up downtown Hanover.
Thank you. In the second row, with your hand up.
Hi, Kim Frost, 494 Hanover Senate Road in Etna. Sorry. Thank you, Peter, for your explanation. Sorry, this is weird. For your explanation of the social services budget and the police budget. My question is, what is Hanover's fair contribution to the provision of social services in this area? So you said that we fund the agencies based on the proportion of their populations, their service populations that receive -- that are Hanover residents. And I'm reminded of Elizabeth Warren's comments about how all of us benefit from the provision of education and other services to a larger community. So other possibilities for how we could fund these agencies might be the proportion of Hanover residents in total to the proportion or to the number of total people in the service areas for those agencies. Or it could be based on the total tax base, Hanover's total tax base relative to the total, or any number of different other things. We could even fund agencies based on what they need rather than what they should spend. So we know, for example, there are not enough mental health services available to residents in our catchment area. So my question is, is the way that we fund social services agencies legally mandated? Or is this a choice that we make? And if so, might we consider other options?
Thank you. Ms. Griffin first.
So, Kim, we have a social service agency funding policy, which we spent a fair amount of time working on over a decade ago. And that came as a result of some town meeting conversation about that same time about the amount of money we provided in funding to agencies. We ask agencies to provide us, as part of their funding request, with the total number of patients or clients served within their catchment area, not just in Hanover. And then the total number of Hanover clients served as a percentage of the total number they serve during a calendar year. And we look to -- we also ask them to provide information to us about the amount of funding they receive from each and every community they also seek support from, financial support from. So we like to see where is Hanover's level of support in comparison with all the other communities that provide financial support to you? And how does that equate to the percentage of Hanover clients that are served by that agency as compared with their total client population? And that's the basis on which we grant funds to agencies. For the most part, Kim, we fully fund the requests agencies make to us. There have been times this year, for example, when the Community Action Program asked us for a significant increase in funding and given the -- and because they lost state funding almost completely, so they turned to all the communities to pay for their costs. And we could not afford this year, in complying with the tax target, to meet their total requested funding for the coming fiscal year. But I think in the future, we'll have to look at how we can factor in support for the Community Action Program going forward. This coming year, it just wasn't possible because of the budget constraints we face. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. I saw a couple more hands in the last row. Over here on the left, where? Oh, yeah. Go ahead, there in the second row, left.
Hi, I'm Kevin Canuti from Etna. I'm not on the Finance Committee, but I've spoken to Kari several times about budgets over past years. I looked at the town reports and the budgets over the last 10 years prior to this meeting, and I've listened to Mr. Christie explain the budget at each town meeting year after year. I did want to quickly comment that when he said that the town Select Board held costs in check last year due to COVID, that's not really correct since we had a heated debate on the budget last year, and the budget did increase despite COVID. But what I wanted to comment on right now is that over the last 10 years, the town's budget has increased over 25%. It's a relatively small percent year to year, but cumulatively, it's significant, and it vastly exceeds the rate of inflation by over 10%. So I'm wondering, this really isn't a sustainable track? And if the town has a plan or some way to consider this so that we don't keep having ever increasing costs beyond what everyone else in the country does as on an average? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want a response from the Select Board?
I think what was just -- am I on?
Yep.
I think what I've just heard is a 25% increase over 10 years, which would be, I guess, an average of 2.5% per year. I think that is a great accomplishment, to be honest with you. And I do not agree with that. It is unsustainable. If we can maintain budgets year in, year out at less than 3%, we will have, in my opinion, done our job very well. Our needs are ever -- there's never -- there's a never-ending need. There's a never-ending expression of well-intended and inappropriate needs for the town, and we try to balance those each and every year. And if we can do that at 2.5% per year, I think we've done our job.
Hello. It's actually not 2.5% per year when you look at percentage increases and you go back to the original cost. That's 2.5% based on modern budget, but you have to go back and look at the lower values of the previous year budget. So that's not how the math works. It still exceeds the rate of inflation and costs various consumer price indexes for the country by about 70%, and that's fairly significant. So I disagree that it's sustainable, and I'm surprised you would say that.
Thank you. Further comment on Article 17? We'll hear all comers. We have a question over here.
Actually, this is Kari Asmus again of Jew Sawsville Road. I thank Kevin for his questions and the conversations that we've had over the years. And this is exactly the sort of thing that the Finance Committee is interested in. And I'd be happy to go over those numbers with Kevin. One of the things that, as the Finance Committee looks at, is not just the increase in the budget, but increases minus increases in revenues. So if there is an addition to the REX program where the entire of that addition to the budget is offset by fees that are paid, then in some ways, we don't really consider that the same sort of increase as one that is borne by the taxpayer. So that's an important distinguish, something that we distinguish and look at. And again, I'd be happy to look at the numbers that Kevin had. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment on Article 17? Seeing no further request for comment, I will call the question. All in favor of Article 17? Raise your palette for yes. Thank you. All opposed? Raise your palette for no. Thank you. The motion carries and Article 17 carries. Article 18, Mr. Rossius.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to adopt Hanover Community Power Electric Aggregation Plan, which authorizes the Select Board to develop and implement Hanover Community Power as described therein. I think you got a live mic there. Pursuant to RSA 53E:7.
Ms. Griffin, would you explain?
Do you want a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct, yes. I do need a second on that. A second in the front. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Ms. Griffin.
Just wanted to give you all a little bit of background and on how we got to this point with the proposal for Hanover Community Power. We've actually been at this for seven years, believe it or not. In 2015, Sustainable Hanover launched Hanover Green Power, and about 380 households participated. We purchased 100% green power through a company called ENH. It was our first foray into essentially a buying co-op for electricity consumers in Hanover. Then unfortunately, in 2016, ENH was acquired by a company named Spark, who took one look at this little aggregation in Hanover, New Hampshire, buying green power and said, "You're not worth our time. We can't acquire renewable energy certificates for a group that's so tiny." So we put the program on hiatus in the spring of 2017, at the very same time that town meeting adopted the Ready for 100 commitment, at which point the town committed to 100% renewable electricity by 2030 and 100% heating and transportation fuel by 2050. Sustainable Hanover worked with a wonderful group of consultants called Three Degrees, the principal of Three Degrees is a Dartmouth alum, to come up with our energy plan so that we could meet our Ready for 100 goals. We spent a lot of time in working on that plan, learning about the world of municipal aggregation of electricity and also about the potential for long-term power purchase agreements for wholesale users. As a result of that plan developed with Three Degrees, we adopted four goals to get us to our Ready for 100 commitment. The first was that the town itself needed to walk the talk. We needed to solarize the heck out of our town facilities and figure out how to meet our 3-megawatt annual electricity consumption by generating our own electricity. And as of the end of August next month, we'll be generating 2.9 megawatts of electricity between town facility rooftops and the two phases of ground manner solar arrays, the second of which is under construction now adjacent to the water filtration plant on Grass Road. The second goal was to launch Solarize and Weatherize to help individual homeowners do just that. And we hope that by the end of 2020, And we hope that by the end of 2021, 250 homes will have installed solar on their rooftops or in ground-mounted arrays. Unfortunately, Weatherize right now is stalled because the state of New Hampshire can't decide how much money it wants to make available for energy efficiency rebates. So we're all waiting. We know lots of you are too. The state needs to get its act together. Three, the third recommendation was to form a municipal aggregation. Think of it as a big buying cooperative so that we could help all of our retail customers, that's all of you as individual homeowners, and our small businesses who purchase power largely from Liberty. You pay for default service, and that power is only 21.6% green because that's the state's requirement, otherwise known as the Renewable Portfolio Standard. One way to get you all to 100% green power is by pulling you all together to become one big buying co-op, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight. The fourth was to work with an entity that would allow our large consumers of electricity, think Dartmouth College, Hypertherm, Candlelet Hanover, Co-op Food Stores, Sheridan Printing, the School District, and Crowe, by helping them enter into a long-term power purchase agreement to procure green power. We then spent six months in 2018 working with Liberty Utilities to try and figure out just how much electricity consumers in Hanover purchased in sector by sector. Took six months to get that data from Liberty. As a result of having that data available, in 2019, we came together with a group of other New Hampshire communities, including the city of Lebanon, to explore municipal aggregation and discovered that the RSA and the state, RSA 53E, that allows communities to pull together to purchase electricity on a cooperative basis, had an opt-in provision, not an opt-out provision, which meant the only way individual households and small businesses could participate is if they actually raised their hand and said, "I want to sign up." The experience around the country is that when you have an opt-in program, you don't get a lot of participation because you have a hard time getting people's attention. When you have an opt-out program, which is to say, everybody in the community is enrolled, we send the price information and comparison to Liberty's pricing to each and every enrollee in town, and you can decide to opt out and remain as a default customer of Liberty if you choose to. Otherwise, you're in the co-op. We worked with Lebanon and dozens of other communities in the state and introduced legislation in 2019 that changed two words in the statute in 53E from opt-in to opt-out. The legislature adopted the bill, and the governor signed it in late September of 2019. And we immediately then got to work to create the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire and to begin to form an entity called Hanover Community Power. I, along with April Salas, our part-time sustainability director, spent the better part of the pandemic while also trying to take care of the community, planning for this moment tonight. And I have to tell you, it's been one of the most satisfying projects I've ever had the opportunity to work on as your town manager. It's both intellectually fascinating, technically complex, but also, I think, has the potential to reap incredible green power benefits for this community. We proposed to the Select Board in January of this year that we join the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, and they voted to do that in late January. The next step was to bring this electric aggregation plan to the town tonight for your approval, as required by RSA 53E. If you vote in favor of this tonight, here's what will happen. We will incorporate the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, which is a multi-jurisdiction entity, in early September of this year. The first 21 communities that join CPCNH will have the ability to appoint a board member to the organization. So it's an entity that will be run by member communities. That's the timer, Jeremy. It says the bond vote is over. Then, in the spring of next year, we will be going out to bid with all of the other member communities in CPCNH to procure green power for each and every community member who chooses to be a portion of the aggregation. Once we get our rates from the individual entities that bid to provide us 100% green power, we will be sending information to each and every Hanover retail utility account, so that's homeowners and small businesses, outlining the rate that we propose for you if you remain in the aggregation, as well as the comparison Liberty rate. You'll have 30 days to decide if you want to remain in the aggregation or remain, in fact, as a default electricity customer of Liberty Utilities. And once we know how many individuals remain in the aggregation, we'll purchase the power. Nothing will change in terms of the way you receive electricity now. Liberty still owns the transmission grid, still owns your meter, and will still send you your bill. The only difference, if you stay as a member of the aggregation, is that instead of on your bill, power supply says Liberty and gives you a price, it will say Hanover Community Power with the price that we've assured you you'll receive from Hanover Community Power. The key will be that power will be 100% green power, not 21.6% default green power as required by the state of New Hampshire. In order to make this happen, we need town meeting to approve the electric aggregation plan this evening. The plan itself is in the town report. I have to tell you, it's very complex and dense because the statute requires us to provide a very complex plan, but I spent time writing frequently asked questions, responses for all of you to try and make it as easy as possible for residents to understand.
Thank you. Before we move on to debate on Article 18, I just want to gather the ballots for the question, the bond question at Article 7. Make sure we have them all in one place. Julie, are we going to send that over to the tent for counting? Where are we getting to town? Over to the tent?
Yes, over to the tent for counting.
Thanks. So, yeah, Rob and Pete, if you could march those over to Betsy, that would be great. Continuing our debate on Article 18, is there anybody that would like to make an observation, offer thoughts, questions, concerns about Article 18 and the Hanover Community Power Electric Aggregation Plan? Oh, there's one right there. Thank you, in the second row, right by the light.
Thanks for taking my question, Don Collish from East Wheelock Street. I know it is addressed in the town report, but as you said, Julia, it's pretty dense. Could you comment on the impact of the Community Power proposal on either, on home solar, either rooftop or backyard?
Thank you, Don. That's a good question. Currently, the rules that we have proposed before the Public Utilities Commission would allow you as a, or I or any of us who host solar on our rooftop or on a ground mounted array, to participate in the program as a net metering customer. Interestingly enough, the utilities, the incumbent electric utilities, have been pretty difficult to work with on the operating rules for community power because they, quite frankly, feel threatened by the notion of another set of entities coming into the state to provide 100% green power. And the reason they feel concerned is that they have to procure power on behalf of all of their customers, and it injects a bit of uncertainty into their approach to purchasing electricity in the wholesale marketplace. The Public Utilities Commission, which has now been pulled into the Department of Energy, a newly created state agency, is in the process of hearing these rules. If the rules go according to our plan, then net metering customers will be able to participate in the electric aggregation. But we won't know for certain until the agency approves the rules, which we hope will be sometime in early fall.
Thank you. I see a question here in the second row.
Thank you, Julia. David Sobel, Dresden Road again. While I appreciate the complexity of how electric rates are set and wouldn't even, you know, profess to understand one iota of that, do you have any sort of general guesstimate as to how the pricing would likely break down for the consumer?
So, David, we've indicated in our electric aggregation plan that we will not bring a green power price to Hanover consumers unless it meets or beats the Liberty price. We happen to believe that by buying in large-scale bulk, essentially on the wholesale market to procure green power, that we'll be able to price options that will be price-competitive with Liberty. Some communities have found that what they have to do is offer two or three options. One option is a 50% green, one option's a 75% green, and one is 100% green because in some cases, the 100% green product has been somewhat more expensive than the default rate. So we may end up having to offer a menu of options to participants in the program and let them choose, but what we're hearing right now from the wholesale marketplace, particularly given the evolving offshore wind opportunities in New England, that we can meet or beat the Liberty default price.
Thank you. Any further thoughts, questions, comments, observations? Yep, second row by the light.
Hi, this is Bill Fischel at Two Reed Road, still dealing with the feedback. My question is, how irreversible are consumer choices at this point? If you opt in or opt out, will you in the future, if things don't go the way you'd hoped, be able to reverse your choice?
Yes, Bill, you'll be able, customers can opt out on a month-by-month basis. So let's give you an example. Liberty typically procures their power twice a year in the wholesale marketplace. They go out to bid in the spring and in the late fall. Spring pricing is typically better, lower than fall pricing. There have been times when they are able to secure a more competitive price for default power, and then there are other times when we see a significant increase in power prices because of what's happening in the electricity marketplace. Individual customers in Hanover can opt out of the aggregation on a monthly basis. So if a customer decides that the green power product is more expensive because Liberty is able to obtain a cheaper price, even though it's a browner power mix, or if a customer decides that another competitive energy supplier might have a better product for them, they can opt out on a monthly basis. So nobody's locked in, you know, beyond one month. That's all spelled out in the plan, by the way.
Thank you. There's a comment, I think, over here on the right side.
Thank you. Jeff Acker, 27 Greensboro Road. I'm just curious, what are the administrative costs of the community power system, and how do those get, do they get attributed to each customer? Are they going to end up in our municipal budget, or how does that all work?
No, actually, Jeff, state law prevents the local community from funding the community power program, so this legally, we can't fund any of these costs through the general fund budget of the town. Typically, the way this, the community power aggregations work, and there are dozens of already operating community power aggregations all over the U.S., including a large number out on the West Coast, and a fair number in the Midwest, three or four in Texas, and one, six in Massachusetts, is that when you are quoted an electricity rate by a supplier, included in that rate is their administrative cost for the program. So our goal in procuring the green power is to ensure that the rate that we're paying as the Hanover consumer of electricity is no higher than Liberty, and all of the costs of administering the program are built into the rate. So the town of Hanover is paying nothing, and what we've said in our aggregation plan is we won't offer a rate to customers that's 100% green unless it meets or beats the Liberty rate.
Thank you. Any further comments? One comment here in the second row, left by the light.
Thank you. My name's Peter Mertz. I live at 150, oops, 21 Old Lime Road in Hanover. I have a question about what is the definition of green? For instance, I would think it's very important to have carbon-free energy, which would include nuclear. Is that part of our definition of green here?
Peter, that's an excellent question, and it's a question that we've been talking about as the steering committee for the launch of the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. And what's included in green is a major subject of debate. For example, in some community power aggregations, nuclear is included in green; in others, it is not. In some, large-scale hydro is included in green; in some, only small-scale hydro is included. My sense, from taking the pulse of the group that we've got, the group of communities that we're working with now, is that they do not want to include nuclear power in the green calculation, that they're looking at offshore and onshore wind and solar, some geothermal, but not nuclear. I think we will see, as this aggregation launches, as this Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire launches, we'll have to take the temperature of the marketplace. What we've seen with most of the other community power aggregations on the West Coast is that they do not include nuclear, but some of the aggregations in the Midwest and in Texas do. So I think it's safe to say, still to be determined, but what's clear, what Hanover's indicated in our plan is that when we bid the product and establish the rates, we'll be absolutely clear in all of the information we send to every rate pair is to the full makeup of that power package.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
I do have a further question. I fully support the transition to carbon-free energy. I think that's very important for all of us, but I am concerned about the potential to disregard existing carbon-free and renewable energy. Now, if I understand, within the borders of our state, we generate electricity from --
Nuclear.
Nuclear.
Right.
Approximately 68% by the statistics that I was researching at EIA, 10% from hydro, 11% from renewables other than hydroelectric, which would suggest that within our borders, we generate nearly 90% from renewables or carbon-free energy. Is that your understanding as well?
It is, Peter, and we actually track the production patterns and really the sort of default product consumption patterns on a monthly basis through ISO New England. One of the interesting opportunities that's emerging, and I referenced the offshore wind opportunity that we're watching very closely, is that a number of the wholesale providers are interested in securing green contracts with large aggregations like Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire as part of the financing for the Vineyard Wind Project, 14 miles off the cost of Martha's Vineyard. The first 400 megawatts of that project have been secured by Eversource and some of the other incumbent electric utilities from Massachusetts. other incumbent electric utilities for Massachusetts customers, but the second 400-megawatt installation is now about to go on the open market for procurement. So I think the future of New England, particularly if the offshore wind marketplace really takes off, is looking brighter for the potential to secure offshore wind electricity. But you're absolutely right. Currently, New Hampshire relies heavily on Zebroch nuclear.
And one final point. I think that we are going to find environmental impacts from all sources of energy. We don't yet fully understand those from wind or from solar. We know many of them, but they're still represent such a small share. We don't fully understand what those impacts will be with a larger share, and I hope that the committee can be very transparent or provide us with sources where we can really research this more carefully than I certainly felt I was able to with the information I was provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much. Any further comment on Article 18? There being no further comment, I'm going to call the question. All in favor of Article 18 regarding Hanover Community Power, raise your hand, "aye." Thank you. And all opposed, please raise your palette. Motion passes. Article 18 passes. Article 19, Mr. Rassius.
I move that the town vote to authorize the exchange of two parcels of undeveloped town-owned land at 60 and 61 Goose Pond Road totaling 4.08 plus or minus acres for 26 plus or minus acres of undeveloped land at 79 Tunis Road owned by the Bear Hill Conservancy Trust. The town parcels will be merged with other lands of Bear Hill Conservancy Trust and will not be used for development. The property at 79 Tunis Road will become part of the town open space system and used for conservation and recreation purposes.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I see a second here in the back and in the front row. Any further comment or debate on Article 19?
Jeremy, just, I can just describe that in a little bit further. If everyone has their books and looks at page 108, there's a map of Goose Pond Road, and this proposal is about as logical as logical can be, given that the two town-owned parcel, the current town-owned parcels are completely surrounded by the Bear Hill Conservancy, and the parcel that is suggested or being proposed to be swapped for is adjacent to many managed lands that will greatly benefit the open space recreational potential and wildlife preservation potential of the town. And this has been seen by the Conservation Commission, and they strongly support it.
Thank you. Any further debate on Article 19? Questions, thoughts, concerns? Seeing none, I'll move the question. All in favor of Article 19, raise your palette for "aye," for "yes." Thank you. And all opposed for "no," raise your palette. The motion carries. Article 19 carries. I'd like to announce the results of bond Article 7. 193 yes votes, four no votes, and three uncertain votes. Article 7 therefore carries. Article 20, Mr. Rassius.
I move that the town vote to urge that the New Hampshire General Court, which is obligated to redraw the maps of political districts within the state following the federal census, will ensure fair and effective representation of New Hampshire voters without gerrymandering. Additionally, these voters ask the town of Hanover to urge the New Hampshire General Court to carry out the redistricting in a fair and, excuse me, transparent way through public meetings, not to favor a particular political party, to include communities of interest, and to minimize multiple seat districts. The record of the vote shall be transmitted by written notice from town officials to Hanover's state legislatures within 30 days of the vote.
Thank you. Do I have a second? See a second over here on the left? Thank you. Any comment, observation on Article 20? Yes, comment here on the left.
Thank you. Deb Nelson, I live at 21 Forest Edge Drive in Hanover, and I brought this petition item to the town meeting. And as I think we all are aware, every 10 years, there's a census, which is followed by redistricting, and in the last legislative session, the majority in the House and Senate voted to set up an independent redistricting committee, which the governor vetoed. And so this process is going to happen again this fall. And so this is simply, and I hope easily, supported because it's simply saying, "Would you be fair? Would you be transparent? And would you please not gerrymander?" And so the language of this petitioned item is really asking you to join over 71 other communities in the state of New Hampshire in conveying this request to the legislators in Concord. And I don't know if you have any questions, but I would be happy to answer them. I think we are the last town meeting to schedule a town, or the last town to have a town meeting, and so we will be the final town or community to vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment, observation, or question on Article 20 regarding gerrymandering? Seeing no further comment, I'll call the question. All in favor of Article 20, say "aye," by raising your palette. Thank you. All opposed? The ayes carry. Article 20, motion passes. So I will move that the town vote to transact any other business that may legally be brought before the town meeting. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor, say "aye." All opposed? The ayes carry. The motion passes. Article 21 passes, and that concludes our town meeting for 2021. Thank you very much, everybody.